Call this meeting to order, Monday, December 8th at 6:00 PM. Crosby, Churroco, please.
Jason?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Dick?
Here.
Dim?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Carolyn?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Crosby, here.
This is an open meeting and it has been posted, please join for the Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the unity of us all.
Thank you all for coming, we're gonna start off with recognitions, a donor recognition.
Yes, thank you, this evening we would like to recognize Alice and Joe Whitmore for graciously donating $3,000 to the La Guanego High School Coral Department. We thank them for their generous donation.
Alright, thank you, now we're going to Employee of the Month for Eagleville.
Michelle. Michelle Stubbins. Michelle is kind and compassionate to all, especially our youngest students who she spends much of her day with. She understands what they want and what they need to calm down or to get them motivated. She has a wonderful sense of humor and makes tense situations lighter and easier to handle. She is such a joy to be around with her kind smile and infectious laugh. Michelle is dedicated, professional, and caring. She has strong connections with students and she creates a positive environment where students feel safe, respected, and supported. She is firm and fair with her approach to guiding our students, and they in turn show a great deal of respect and cooperation to her. Michelle's presence truly benefits everyone in our school community, thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, you made a picture. Congratulations, Michelle. Alright, we don't have any citizens comments, so we are gonna go into the student report. If any parents, teachers, anybody wants to come up here and take pictures, feel free to come here and take pictures, video, wherever you'd like. And the floor is yours. Wanna turn on your mics, press the button till it turns green. There you go. There we go, thank you, Angela.
Hi, my name is Maddie and I'm here with Evie and Mason. We're a part of Student Council at Eagleville and we're here to share events that have taken place at our school this fall. Here are the areas that we'll focus on for the presentation. Our ongoing Green Initiative highlights are all-school activities, our academic highlights, and our PBIS highlights. Green initiatives, there are many ways that we carry out our environmental focus as a school on a daily basis, as well as with special projects throughout the year. Every day we collect recyclables and at the end of the week we weigh them. So far this year we have collected and recycled over 1,000 pounds of paper, plastic, and cardboard that would have taken up over 100 cubic feet in the landfill. Every day, all students separate what food items can be composted and they're taken out to our composting area. Each week we collect about 70 pounds of food waste and will add the compost, which would then be high-quality soil, to our mobile green boxes in the spring. Our second annual Green Fair took place in early October. Each class created presentations and activities to share with everyone who attended. We partnered with several community groups to share and learn from them as well, including Helen Holtz from Milwaukee Shop County Land Conservation. We even had a race for boats made of recycled materials in the creek. Every year, mid-September, we studied the forest ages of development of a monarch butterfly. Once they were ready to fly, we carefully placed tracking tags on their wings with the idea that others will see them and the data will be used to determine overall health and migration patterns. We also plant new plants in our butterfly garden to attract bees and butterflies. Throughout the fall, each of our classes spent time in the creek, learning about the many creatures that inhabit the system and make connections between the diversity of life in the creek and how it relates to overall health. Every year, the older classes help the younger classes plant a tulip test garden as part of an international science project called Journey North. For Journey North, we will connect with hundreds of other schools in the northern hemisphere. We are beginning this fall by planting red emperor tulip bulbs. Next spring, we will share our local observations and track spring's progress.
Hello, my name is Evie and I'm going to be sharing a few some of our school activities up to this point in the year. Heritage Day, this year marks the 176th birthday of Eagleville as a school, which we celebrate as our Heritage Day. This year's guest of honor was Miss Adala Fentia, who was a teacher at Eagleville in the 1960s. She shared her memories and experiences of days here and had a chance to ring the school bell one final time. MHS Homecoming Parade, in September we marched at the MHS Homecoming Parade. It is a really fun way to show our school spirit and support larger school communities. Eagleville Pumpkin, to create a fun-filled after-school family event, each student decorated a pumpkin and placed them in our school forest for all to enjoy at a fall-time night. Our Fall Time Hype, it was a fun chance to experience our setting at a different time than the normal school day. La Guanego Gym Jack-o'-lantern Jump, once again, students, staff, and family members helped carve puppets to spell "Eagleville" and others had a very creative connection to education, especially the pumpkin pie, the pumpkin pie. Dillsdale's March of MHS Spanish Club Visit, in early November, we had a Spanish visit from La Guanego High School's Spanish club, where they taught us each of our classes about Dillsdale's Butter, a two-day celebration to honor those who have passed away. We recreated a few of the traditional pieces of the holidays such as masks, pants, and floral crafts. Veterans Day Wall of Honor/Grandparents/VIP Lunch, in November, we created a wall of honor at our gym, which included the artwork of poppies and American flags. Students and staff also recognized family members of the honor force by displaying information about their service. We were very fortunate to have an American League from La Guanego Bush 375 for a presentation of color ceremony and a plaque of tax. We welcomed our grandparents and special guests that week, which was really nice to share the wall of honor with them. Annual Turkey Walk and the expression of thankfulness. During Christmas, on the last day of school before Thanksgiving, we had a visit from Ty Barius the turkey, who led us on a walk through the woods on his tractor, to find how many paper turkeys were hiding in the woods. We also wrote notes of gratitude to place them at our fellers as our turkey, as our school turkey, and a gem for all of us to read.
Hi, I'm Mason and I'll be talking about academic highlights in our PBIS program. Outdoor Science, our outdoor science activities get close to nature and on-hands learning. Topics this year have included tree identification, species identification, and health of creek, land conservation, and forest fires prevention. Just name, to name. All-School STEM Activities, this fall, we had our All-School STEM Activity which connects science and technology with problem-solving. The challenge this year was to create a tool and process for planting seeds and irrigation system. That would not wash away the soil. We worked as teams and included all grade levels to put our ideas into action. Balloons Over Broadway Parade, recently, the kindergartners in first grade read the book Balloons Over Broadway, a story of a puppeteer who invented the giant balloons for the Macy's Day Thanksgiving Parade. The students then took their turn at creating the balloons and having their own parade outside. PBIS Highlights, PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, and we know is the Eagleville Way. It serves our guide for being safe, respectful, and responsible, in all areas of the school and on the bus. PBIS Assemblies, we have all-school assemblies each month to recognize individual students as they will as their entire class. Our music, gym, and art teachers choose the classes they feel has been working the hardest with a golden award. When they're caught doing things right, they're given a talent ticket which can be used for many different incentives, like royalty for the day or superhero for the day. We also have school goals such as entering the building quietly from recess. Eagleville High Flyer Recognitions, our high-flyer awards are given to specific students from staff members, from staff members for going above and beyond on their actions of being safe, respectful, and responsible. So far, over 30 students have been given a high flyer this year. Thanks for the chance to share our wonderful things that are happening at Eagleville, do you have any questions for us?
Any questions? Great job, how long did you three practice for this, because you killed it, you did great.
Only today.
That's fantastic job. Mike?
I have one quick question, I did not know you can tag butterflies, what kind of tags are you using?
They're like little stickers that you put on their wings, and then they have like a number, and then if somebody sees it, they like message you kind of.
Wow, very interesting, cool, and when they fly too?
Mexico.
So, when you win the awards for good behavior, so more royalty or more superheroes chosen?
Definitely more royalty.
Nice.
Any other question? Fantastic job.
Great job.
Let's move on to Presentations, Eagleville Elementary Char School, Mr. Plant.
You get to follow those great kids, so good luck.
Very tough act to follow, but I'm extremely proud of them and the families and the staff support that's here. It's an incredible place to feel supported all the time. Thank you for allowing me to be here and to share our goals for the 2025-26 school year.
Mr. Plant, before you start, Michelle won an award, but what is Michelle's position?
She's an instructional assistant in our kindergarten and first-grade classroom.
Thank you.
Okay, as you can see, we continue and as students presented, our dedication to our Green Ribbon School designation, that carries out day in and day out. We are extremely proud of our significantly exceeding expectations status. We are number 51 out of 879 elementary schools in this year's DPI report card, so that's, we're proud of that. We also have 50 reasons to keep on working as hard as you can to continuously improve. As we spend some time this past August and throughout the year connecting our vision and mission, we kind of see as our roadmap and our destinations kind of come together here. So with the vision being our destination, it's a feeling that all students can learn and grow to become active citizens, shaping a stronger community. And our roadmap for getting there is that we create a positive learning experience for all students, and we believe that all students can learn and have an impact on their environment, whether that environment be their classroom, their school, their lives beyond school, so all those go together. And that picture that you see up there is just a part of our graduating class from 2025 from this previous year, who came back to visit us for our senior tea day, and that was a powerful moment where they were able to kind of, again, thank their staff who was here and connect with them. I had the, I was fortunate enough to know a lot of them as high school students, so that was a big part of seeing them come back to Eagleville and just see how much they have grown since then. And it kind of gives us that idea of how can we not only build them up until they leave us in Eagleville, but how can they continue to carry on to be strong citizens beyond high school? Our first goal for the year is based on our math category year, so we're looking at for the 2025-26 school year to have 75% of our fourth through sixth grade students improve in their percentile rank on the forward exam from math from the preceding year. So just as a way of saying, students are not only getting the skills but also growing from year to year, that percentile rank kind of puts them in certain categories of course, but then definitely is a way to see if they are kind of outpacing their peers, whether it's at school or beyond school. And the connection to that would be that one of our MASD key performance indicators is that we want 75% of students to be proficient or advanced on our forward math scores. Last year, we were at 61%, so we were feeling with a few changes, we can be at that 75% or higher range for our math category. we can be at that seventy-five percent or higher range for our math category. As far as action steps, we want to continue to engage in professional development with our iReady Math Resource Trainers. Eagleville is unique in using iReady as our math curriculum because of our multi-grade arrangement. So we kind of balance out our math by teaching each grade level, but then they also have some independent work time. And the iReady Curriculum Platform or the iReady Resource provides us that opportunity for students to work on their own, and it's just a matter of us getting a better sense of how to make sure that the students are maximizing the use of time for independent work time, but also making sure the lessons are effective and impactful. We'll also work to realign, give and analyze trimester formative assessments and pre-assessments kind of based on previous year's forward data. So we look at an area and say if there's a standard that students missed the mark on, if it's more than half of the students, we take a look at that and formulate questions to kind of provide them both, again, pre-assessment, teach them through it, but then also see how they do post-assessment. And then between those two, with the help of our iReady Resource, developing strategy groups for students that kind of extend the learning for students who either have match standards or who need additional practice. School Goal Number Two. Talking about our ELA and literacy areas. Similar goal to our math one, where we're using forward data. So at least seventy-five percent of our fourth through sixth-grade students will improve their percentile rank on the forward exam. Another key indicator that we have set for the district would be that seventy percent of students would be either proficient or advanced on the Wisconsin Forward ELA. We were close to that mark in twenty-four, twenty-five, so we're hoping with our goal of getting seventy-five percent of our students to grow in their percentile rank, that it's going to push us over that overall seventy percent goal and even perhaps higher. From a staff standpoint, just using diagnostic data throughout the year, where we then take that into our PLC groups, which we really have one that's K-one, two, and three, and then we have one that's four, five, and six. So it's kind of, again, the multi-grade aspect of it can present some challenges with, you don't have sixty kids that are all on the same grade level, but we can also look at how those skills develop from one grade level to the next. So we can kind of use that as a way of saying, okay, in sixth grade, we expect them to do this. So how can we kind of compare that to our fifth-grade expectations and work on the same maybe general question, but then find some of those target areas to focus in on and compare their performance on? Utilizing letters formative assessments to determine which students may be in need of additional support. So that just means kind of ongoing, almost like instantaneous, not waiting for a test score, but day in and day out, just kind of measuring where they need supported and growing them that way. And the final part there is creating strategy groups to directly address growth in specific standards or skills. Our final school goal is based on student engagement levels. So we're looking at having at least eighty-five percent of students throughout our school, K through six, demonstrate consistent academic engagement with a particular focus in math through positive learning and behaviors in classroom settings as measured by engagement rubics. And this is kind of tied to our overall district goal of student engagement being essential for student growth and that we are going to use best practices to enhance student and academic social behaviors. Some early data, this is from a survey we gave back in September. And there's different ways to look at this question and the responses here. So we, you know, just simply asking kids, how do they feel if they get a wrong answer? And a lot of them did not feel that's a good thing if they get a wrong answer. So we're going to kind of use this to kind of reshape how they feel about it. Like if it's practice questions, if it's ways that they're building their skill, you know, just to reinforce them, it's okay to get a wrong answer from time to time as long as you're able to reconnect and grow from that. So it's just a matter of the student mindset to say that wrong answer is okay. We just want to work to practice and work together to refine that. Another fall data piece here would be that learning from other students, that they can learn from other students when they work together. We are very encouraged by this, by saying that either fifty-eight percent or thirty-eight, thirty-four percent strongly agree or somewhat agree just from the idea that they can work together and grow. So that's going to be something that we kind of build that mindset of being part of groups that are productive, part of groups that are problem-solving and critical thinkers, just as a matter of confidence when it comes to any subject, any type of assessment. We've been working through our Behavior Solutions Model, which focuses on implementing academic and social behaviors in a similar way that academic skills are taught in the test. Part of that also means that we're aligning our PBIS model to just kind of go into the direction of student engagement. And part of that engagement piece is to find resources that have a positive mindset towards challenging math problem-solving for students. So we have, our first way of starting off the year was with a week of inspirational math. So just the idea that they have confidence, they don't hear the word, okay, it's math class, and they groan and kind of turn off from it. So just the idea that it's a challenge, but they can work together and persevere. So with that, is there any questions that you may have?
Inspirational math, really, Mr. Plant?
It's, well, if you look at it from a challenge part and accomplishment, then they can inspire each other and themselves, right? Any questions?
I just think it's amazing the great work you guys do there, especially when you go in that building. See how the space is very limited there and the shared classes. I mean, you guys do an awesome job. You should pat yourselves on the back because it's a phenomenal job.
Yeah, the sense of community that the staff and families create is just, it's incredible, and that carries a lot with each and every student. All right, welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next, we have English Language Learners.
Okay. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Anita Lamburger and Jamie Dobner for attending tonight. Anita is our English Language Learner Teacher. And so you don't hear a lot from us around our English learners in our district, and so I wanted to have an opportunity to introduce Anita and the work she does. So Anita brings with us a lot of experience, having been in McQuarinsville for a number of years and then spent quite a number of years at Saint John's Military Academy during English learning as well. And so she is also a part-time interventionist for our district, title interventionist for our district. And then Jamie, she's old hat now, but she was here one other time, so I asked her. I did not emphasize that word, if that's what you heard, that's not you. So anyway, she's also going to bring us just an update on our McCallie Vandal students because when our number of students who are considered to be homeless increased, and that also, it does use a different reserve of resources in our district. And so I want to provide the board an update in both of those areas.
Welcome.
Anita, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Lucy. I apologize for my voice. I had some viral infections, so I apologize, but thank you for the introduction. Again, I'm Anita Lamburger and the new district ESR teacher. So this is my first board meeting, so I'm a little bit nervous. I apologize. Tonight, we are going to talk about how our school district is supporting students who come to us with a different home language. Yes, this is. Our goal is to make sure every student can use English confidently so they can succeed in regular classrooms without extra support. The better we do this early on, the more efficiently students transition into full independence. The purpose of our program is not to replace or dilute academic expectations, but it is to help students gain the English skills they need to meet the same standards as everyone else. The faster they reach proficiency, the sooner they can fully participate in standard curriculum. This helps maintain consistency and high expectations across the district. We also work to keep families informed and involved. When parents understand what's happening in our schools, students stay on track academically and behaviorally. This reduces misunderstandings, supports better attendance, and improves learning for everyone. This is, this page, this slide is about description of our ELA program. And as you can see, we divided the slide into two pieces. We have newcomers in the district, and we also work with students who are returning ELA, English Language Learners. The newcomer students usually function at a Level One, Level Two. I will talk to you about what Level One, Level Two means and what Level Two and Four means. What I do as an ESR teacher is that I collaborate with teachers. We modify assignments and we accommodate students with providing extra additional time for small group setting. This is for both assessments and for assignments. Students, this way, are supported by classroom teachers, and I also pull out students, we call this the pull-out services. We also do push-in services, especially in the middle school and at the high school level. I also work with higher English proficient students. These are our returning students. In this case, I'm also collaborating with classroom teachers, and I'm also providing pull-out services at the high school level and at the middle school level. I received this beautiful graph from Mr. Castle. He was my helper. And currently, we have twenty-seven ELA students. And if you look at this graph, you will see that we have twelve students in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Now, this indicates a significant growth, a hundred and twenty-five percent growth exactly, and which may indicate increased enrollment of our volatile lingual families in the district. Let me look at our ELA population. As I said before, we have twenty-seven ELA English Language Learners total. We have the most students at the elementary school. We have four students in the middle school and seven students in the high school. We have sixteen students in the elementary school. These are Golden Hills Elementary School. We also have students at Prairie View Elementary School and at Section Elementary School and at Big Bend. Most of these students speak Spanish. You can see that at all levels, they speak Gujarati. Gujarati is an Indian language. It's actually, I looked it up, fifty-seven million people speak Gujarati, which is a lot of people. And they also speak Tagalog, and we have a family from Turkey. They also speak Russian, and we also have Chinese families in the district. In the middle school, we have one family who speak Ukrainian. They also speak Russian. And it's the same language at the high school. We have one family who speaks Portuguese. All right, so here is, here are the levels that I referred to previously. We call these the VIDA Performance Definition Levels. Our newcomer students, usually who enter our school districts newly to English, perform at a level entering and beginning. So this is a Level One and Level Two. And as they increase their proficiency levels, obviously, the proficiency level is growing. So our goal is to reach at least four point five or five. Five is bridging, and in the state of Wisconsin, we consider students being proficient at the level of four point five or five. So our goal here in the district is to have higher proficiency levels so the students could meet academic standards the faster and earlier. How do we get these proficiency levels? So our ELA students are taking the VIDA Access Test every year. This is actually happening right now. The VIDA Access Testing window is open December first and closes January thirty-first. And all of our district ELA students are taking this test. This test is state mandated, and it's also federally mandated. So even if the parents refuse services, the students still need to take this test. It is measuring English language proficiency, and we test English proficiency in four language domains, in the domain of listening, reading, writing, and speaking, in its case, through twelve. One more thing. The results are available in April, and we share the test results with parents and with students and with all educational stakeholders. So all of those people who are part of our academic team and support the student. So what does our commitment to ELA success mean? So supporting our ELA English learner families is really about clear communication and making sure every parent understands what's happening in their child's education. We provide translated notification letters, and we use interpreting services during teacher-parent conferences or during IEP meetings. I have to say that these translators have been very helpful. It really opens up a lot of doors in communication with parents, and we gain their trust, and we can also communicate better with parents if we have translators on-site. We also have another way to communicate with parents with another language. We can also, it was a so-called language line, I didn't put this over here, but the district has that service too. We just got a number and that, the person, we select the language, and then we get a translator, and the translator is able to translate the conversation between the teacher and the parent. So this has been really helpful. Another thing that's in place is the ELA Learning Plans. The ELA Learning Plans. These are kind of similar to IEPs, what is a mandated plans. What they really include is the accommodations and the modifications that are included and recommended for these English Language Learners. And it really can help classroom teachers work and instruction as well. And how do we support teachers? So on the teacher's side, our goal is to simply to equip staff with the right materials and research-based strategies. My goal is to support teachers on a daily basis. I do consult with teachers and set up meetings with them at the high school. I collaborate with department meetings, department teams, and I try to pushing for department meetings so I could follow up with students about the ELA students at the high school. It is really important that we use strategies that are research-based at every level, K through twelve, with our ELA students. And I don't know if you have any questions about.
Is the translating services, is it video or is it telephone?
It's, one way is a phone. It's a phone call. So it's got a language line, and the other one is a translator service from Milwaukee.
Are you getting a video picture of the translator or just verbal?
Just the phone.
Excuse me.
Yes.
School Board meetings up here. If you have any questions. Sorry. You have citizens comments if you wanted to. In comments or ask questions, you can maybe ask them after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Board have any questions? We do not have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we also just wanted to give the board an update on our McCallie Vento students, otherwise known as our students who qualify for homelessness. We noticed an incre- Um, we noticed an increase this year. So last year, we had fourteen students identified throughout the year, and we already are at twenty one students who have been identified so far this year. Um, we kind of attribute that increase in, um, this is our second year with our registration process, being able to identify those students earlier. Um, and parents and families used to answering some of those questions that were new to them last year. Um, as you see, doubled up is the biggest category that we will probably always see um in terms of homelessness, which means that families are living with either other family members or friends because they can't afford housing, or they've lost their housing due to financial hardship. Um, unaccompanied youth is another one that we see quite a bit when we have students who are not living with their family member at that time. So we always want to make sure that those students are able to get to school and not have an interruption in their education, even if their home life is unstable. So I want, I wanted to also dive in a little bit deeper with the the data here. So obviously, um, the high school has the num- largest number of students, and I attribute that to it being the largest school. Um, and then Parkview is second, or well, not second, Clarendon is second, and then Parkview. So Clarendon, we do see the most, um highest population of our um students who are identified as homeless. Um, and so for those students, we make sure that we provide the the proper resources so that they can continue their education um as well. And in terms of grades, um, we see an uptick in ninth and tenth graders. And that I would attribute to also that unaccompanied youth identification. Um, so we fortunately don't see many of our elementary schools in that category, but um that's prob- that's what I'm attributing the um uptick in the ninth and tenth grade. Yeah.
Jamie, can you talk a little bit about transportation? I'm sorry, I just, one of the reasons why I like to bring some of this, um, some of this stuff forward is that our students can sometimes, we have to worry about transportation costs. And so I always like to make sure Tom knows that we are always aware of the budget.
Sure. So when we have a student who loses housing, so if they were a Maquonago student and they lose their housing, um, and they're living in Delphill, let's say, um, we still are able to provide them transportation to Maquonago schools. However, we split that cost with the Elm Brook, with Kettle, Kettle Marine School District, um, a fifty fifty cost. So because they're living in their district, but they're, um, so they're residing in their district, but attending our school, then we're able to split that cost. Um, typically, we use um seniors on the go or Cat Motion, um, which are two of our transport companies that have been really good to us. Um, and what I do as a homeless liaison is I just reach out to the other homeless liaison in the district and say, we have a student living in your area. Um, and then we just invoice them as regularly as they want to, so we make sure that we split
So how does that start? They're here and all of a sudden become homeless, and then they move to a different district for whatever reason, live with somebody else, and then they just stay here?
So under the McNevento Homeless Education Act, they can stay in their school of origin. Our our families can stay in their school of origin. So if they were residing in Maquonago lost housing, for example, and need to stay with a family member or friend in a different city, that law allows them to continue to attend Maquonago so that there's no interruption in their education.
If they chose to go another place, could they?
If they, um, not unless they lost housing or are in temporary housing.
Okay.
But they can choose to go, if they were living in Delphill, for example, if they choose to go to to Kettle Marine, they could do so, but they still have the option to come to Maquonago if they wanted to.
Thank you.
Jamie, could you just talk a little bit about best interest determination?
Sure. So.
Sorry. So do you, do you know when someone's homeless immediately? Or how does that, how does that work? And is, and secondary question, is there, is there like a state, is is there somebody at the state that's helping these families? Okay?
Yep. Um, so we have our processes at registration. Families are asked to answer questions if they've lost housing or are in temporary housing. So if they answer yes to that question at registration, then we and the school health workers and I reach out to the family to get more information to determine if they meet criteria to be for homelessness. So sometimes yes, and then sometimes throughout the school year, we have families who've been evicted, things like that. Um, and it often comes through um a student services member where a a parent has reached out for help, or a student has talked to a student services mem- member about the living situation. Um, and then we go through the criteria, and if we identify them, then we can make sure that they get those resources that they need.
Then we help them out with lunch?
Yes, they automatically get free lunch. Um, so once they're identified, they don't have to fill out the free and reduced form. Um, Christine Oswald has my spreadsheet, so she knows when I put a student on there, and then she can just wave their fees right away. Um, and Jo had asked about the best interest determination. So um, when we do have a student who is homeless and we find they're not being successful in our school, if they're wherever their school of origin, um, or if it doesn't make sense for them to travel far away, couple hours, um, we do what's called the best interest determination meeting. So it's our school district, um, the resident school district, and the parents, and we kind of talk about the pros and cons and determine what's in the best interest of the student, to either stay in their school of origin or to go to their district or the resident school. So while we want to make sure that they're provide, we can provide the resources for them to stay in their school of origin. Sometimes it just doesn't make sense for them to stay here. Um, we also talk about what the long-term plan is for that family. So if the family is planning to then move somewhere else, um, and stay in that community, it would make sense for them to to probably stay in that school district for that, for that period of time until they get permanent housing, um, or if it's during a normal transition timeline, elementary to middle, middle to high school. We we take that into consideration as well.
You have a question?
Carolyn? Would they still, if they stayed in for best interest, in the school district in which they're living now, if they're living with a a friend or something, would they still qualify for this program? So they would still qualify through that district's, uh, free lunch and get some of those perks, or since they're now in a home district, they wouldn't qualify?
They would still qualify for that, the remainder of that school year. So even if they um are able to obtain permanent housing during the school year, they still are able to receive the free lunch and some of those um resources throughout the rest of that school year.
You have other questions? Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna add that every year, um, starting this school year, our social workers go back through um families and connect with them again to determine if they still meet criteria or not. So it is a, there is a review process every year also.
Is that why you come on to the Angel Fund? Or do we have a separate fund set for that?
Ish. Um, sometimes we use the Angel Fund if a family has, has a financial hardship. Um, other times, we have a student assistance fund, um, that I have in student services that I use sometimes. It really depends. It depends on what the need is, anywhere from, you know, medical to clothing to gas, whatever else.
Thanks. Christine, so this is part of the special ed budget? Vote's not?
This is the other bucket. No, it is not, unless it's a student with a disability. These are um, our EL population and our students that are homeless do not fall under flow-through, which is the federal uh special education grant that I get through I D E A. But um, this is just my other buckets that Tom has to buy the money for.
And so the EL, the the first presentation, is that, is that in the special ed budget? That's not either? Okay.
Unless you're a student with a disability.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next, fall athletics.
Welcome, sir. Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. Lot of good stuff tonight. Very interesting learning stuff, as I sit back there, it's awesome.
So we'll see you next, we'll see you next Monday, then?
There we go, sorry. Uh, slow with the technology. Um, so to start off with some activities, um, wanted to uh highlight uh a few of them. Like to talk about new clubs that that we offer every, every year. I have kids and or staff that'll come to be asking about starting up uh potential uh clubs. Last year, uh, one of our staff members, Tommy Morton, uh, brought the idea of a a disc golf uh club. And I said, well, I'll have a sign-up meeting, see what kind of turnout you get. Um, he had fifteen-ish kids show up and uh they're in year two. Uh, they they do a little bit in the fall, uh, some practice stuff, uh, pretty much everything at on on campus, although they have gone to uh Minor Park in Minnewalk and both have uh disc golf courses, so they've played there. Uh, they're looking to compete for the first time this spring, uh, in a competition in in Illinois. Uh, so I can give you a further update maybe on that uh in the spring. But again, a group of kids that are really having a good time with a, with a new club, which is, which is fun to see. On an older club, uh, one that's been successful for us for years, H O S A, um, a health occupation uh club, uh, kids who are looking into getting into the med- medical field, uh, when they, when they leave high school, uh, very vibrant group, a hundred and twenty-five plus uh kids participating, uh, and they will start their competition season here uh in December, and then it it pretty much runs the winter, uh, the winter months. So hopefully be able to update you um the next, next time I'm here as far as their uh their results. Wrong way. Uh, SAVE, this week, we're doing the the annual nickel war uh for SAVE. They're raising money for Make-A-Wish. I think last year, they made between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars, I believe, uh, under nickel wars. Um, our uh SAVE leaders, Joel Hackney, Sarah Handel, and Marilyn Toshner will be presenting at a school safety conference, annual school safety conference. It's held in the Dells. I know we always have a a group that uh goes and attends that, and uh we're proud of them. Our our SAVE group is uh one of the oldest in the state, and they've been very successful with their, with their group. Uh, Key Club, um, again, a huge group, uh, pushing a hundred and fifty kids, um, and they do all kinds of service projects. Uh, they got over five hundred hours uh already to date this year uh for service stuff. I I listed a few there. Uh, one that I wanted to point out was uh movie night. Uh, when we approached you guys about uh putting in the scoreboard, uh, we said that we'd do some community movie night uh things. Uh, Key Club sponsored the first one. I was at Halloween. They did uh hocus pocus. Um, it was about forty-two degrees that night, so we didn't have a huge turnout, but I would say maybe forty to fifty kids, uh, huddled up in blankets, uh, watching the, watching the thing from the turf, which was, which was cool, and the scoreboard handled it so well. Sound was awesome, though.
If I could add to that, I was, I happened to be there that night, and it was like a full drive-in movie theater experience. So a generation that's never gonna see a drive-in movie theater, so it was awesome.
Yeah, this is true. Um, they're, they're uh already planning uh something in the summer. Uh, Lynch would like to sponsor that, um, help, help with the uh any costs that that might be involved as well. So um, I think the movie nights are gonna be something that our our community looks forward to. Some more activities, uh, our marching band, uh, if you've attended any of our football games, you saw them perform at halftime. Uh, for the second year in a row, they placed fourth uh at the State Band Festival uh in Whitewater, uh, which was excellent, so kudos to Emma Angeli and her staff. Uh, choir, uh, we had sixteen kids audition uh for the Midwest American Choral Directors Regional, which will be held in uh in Milwaukee, and eleven kids were accepted. Uh, in talking to PJ Hugh Ozzy, he said, uh, schools are happy if they get two or three kids. Uh, we had eleven, so outstanding work uh by uh by PJ and especially our our students. And then our musical, um, I know many of, many of you attended the musical, uh, just wrapped up, had over a hundred students participate. Uh, they sold out three of the four nights, and they were ten seats short of going four for four, uh, which is the the highest attendance that we've uh ever had for our musical, which was uh, which was awesome. Uh, rave reviews, um, the kids and and staff did a, did just a fantastic job on that. Some highlights from athletics, um, a- another uh great athletic season uh in the fall. We had five girls, uh, state uh participants in in tennis, two doubles teams and a single, singles player. And John Horstviki, uh, our head uh girls tennis coach, was the conference uh coach of the year, uh, which was very well deserved as we finished second uh in the league, which tied our highest uh uh finish ever. Uh, girls golf, uh, a number of girls qualified for the sectional, and I'd like to congratulate Erin Bartlett. Our team was uh named the Classic Eight Sportsmanship uh Team of the Year for for golf, which was great. More fall athletics, uh, boys soccer, volleyball, uh, boys and girls volleyball, a number of all-conference players, uh, Lucy Sarnheim, girls volleyball, all-state, uh, girls volleyball were regional champs. Uh, the boys were a a match away from making it to state for the first time ever. They they uh fell to Arrowhead in in four sets in the sectional final, uh, but a really good run uh by them and a pretty young group. We're excited about uh the future of boys volleyball uh coming up here as well. Uh, football, uh, kind of the same old, same old, state playoffs every year, which is uh, which is a a fantastic thing for them. Uh, they made it to the level two. We ended up with four uh student athletes who were uh all-state. And we just did a signing last week for Devin, who's uh gonna go play at Illinois State, which is pretty cool as well. Then our girls cross-country team, um, led by first-year coach Alyssa Reeves, uh, qualified for Team State. Uh, we hosted the sectional at at Maquonago High School on our cross-country course on the, on the west side of the property. Um, and it was a great day for the girls as they uh, they finished as runners-up at the sectional and qualified to run at uh state in in Wisconsin Rapids. And then last, but certainly not least, our our girls swim uh team. We co-op, uh, for those of you who don't know, with Walk Show South uh for girls swim. Uh, and the team won a conference championship this year, which was awesome. Uh, Maquonago had three individual state qualifiers, uh, Avery Ella and Brooke. Uh, Avery placed in two events at the state meet. Uh, and Ella, I, again, I tried to get her to come uh tonight, uh, because she's a superstar, uh, and I really wanted to show her off and and introduce her to you guys. Uh, she won two state titles, uh, giving her a total of eight for her career. And she's only the second swimmer in the state, in state history to ever do that. Another gal in uh the nineteen seventies, that's one point one, uh, eight state championships as well. Um, last week, um, we had uh State Senator Bradley and Representative uh Whitkers uh came to present her with a legislative uh citation, which was a pretty neat event. Um, so that's a picture there on the bottom of her with them, and um, I hope you all get to meet Ella someday. Fantastic kid, four-point-oh student, AP courses like crazy, uh, and just the nicest girl you you'd ever meet, so an easy one to root for, for sure. And she's gonna go swim at the University of Georgia next year. So that's it for me. I'd like to thank my coaches and our staff and and all the people that contribute, advisors to all the great experiences our kids uh get to participate in.
Any questions or comments?
I was just gonna say that I got to meet Tommy with the disc golf uh.
Yeah.
Coach, just a great young man.
He's awesome.
Really enjoyed talking with him.
Good. Love it.
All right, thanks, Andy. See you next Monday.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Up next, we have consent agenda, uh, for approval of the school board meetings of November seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Any questions or comments? Here and none, that's approved by consent. Moving on down to policy.
All right, so I hope I was able to help you with any sleep issues that you had on behalf of policy. Um, that batch of policies, uh, we've gone through um over the last couple of meetings and different questions. For instance, last week, uh, it was the last week, last month, I'm sorry, it's school board meeting, uh, the question came in, can we pull W I A A approval out of um, out of the uh consent? Yes, we can. Uh, we'll just take a motion uh at the meeting next week to to separate that and we can make that adjustment. As far as uh questions around the dress code, uh, we do need to make that adjustment just based on what is currently in our policy. I remind the board and the community that we do have a policy, uh, fifty-six-hundred point zero one that deals with. that deals with instances of insubordination, chronic refusal, repeated refusal to follow directives. So there's teeth behind that, but the dress code policy doesn't go into specific consequences outside, please make sure you change whatever is inappropriate for school. So that really kind of handles that first bundle there, unless there's any other questions tonight.
Why does everybody look at Crosby? We have the student government.
Student government, so we've had this policy up for the last several months on meetings. We do need to put some structure to the student government policy. I was just seeking some feedback tonight as we go about kind of constructing that. So just as a high-level overview, last month at the board meeting and at the committee and the whole meeting, we talked about this. From a student government standpoint, right now, we have clubs at each school that are called student government, that do not go through any of what we would consider to be a democratic process of elections, running a campaign, so on and so forth. I shared that, you know, through the multiple meetings that I had with our advisors, there is a lot of good and value that those clubs bring from a volunteerism standpoint, leadership standpoint. But there is also, and particularly this came out at the high school level in talking with Matt Schirmarth, the advisor there, there's benefit of having that civics component to it. So we had this discussion last month and there was some feedback as to, I believe we should have an election process. I heard some of that was directed at the secondary level in particular. So I was just hoping that as I go about crafting what that needs to look like, I can get some feedback tonight and capture those ideas.
If I remember correctly, it's like, it might have been Mr. Gooch here that said middle school, high school, and not so much the elementary. We talked about an elementary, go over it, but start holding elections in middle school, correct?
Yeah, I would think, or my opinion was for sure have an election at the high school. And then the middle school, I would be okay with. I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but I don't think it's necessary for an elementary. Eagleville does it, and that's where I kind of got this idea from, how they do it, so. But mandatory, like as far as board policy, I'd be for middle school, high school. And maybe start the process in elementary school of talking about it and how the process works.
Or even electing offices in the elementary school. I know a lot of the elementary schools have large numbers of kids that participate. So if they could have elected officers that are seen as leaders, that will also help prep them for the process of what's to come in middle school and high school when there are true elections.
Just knowing that we're moving sixth grade to the middle school, does that weigh into that thought process at all? That would be, our leadership, that would be fourth and fifth grade. That's kind of where we see those leadership positions taking form, fifth and sixth grade right now. So still maintain an election for fourth and fifth grade, or?
I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Would the board be comfortable if of the students who select to be members of the club, that the club then in and of itself would run the election for those leaders from that body of kids that?
Yeah, that'd be a great learning process for them, talk about it. And electing our leaders, selecting our leaders.
I think that happens by natural process in the elementary level. You see that by the kids that are coming here, doing the presentations on the schools. It's usually the older kids that are in the group or the kids that are able to and willing to speak in front of the people. So that's, I think those are the kids that would be volunteering themselves and, you know, saying, hey, I want this, I want this position.
Would there be any opposition, just thinking about like how our high school has operated as it runs in a class-type format, where kids apply to, you know, they select to be part of it, and there's a selection process? I know that one of the concerns at the high school that all of the schools had was if we go to a full election process, are we gonna be able to do as much as we currently do? Would the same type of election process be okay where of the thirty kids, I'm just grabbing at the number, thirty kids who have selected to be part of this, would those be the kids that would be eligible to run for class office position? And then the whole school would vote for them? Or would it be kind of, and again, this is what some of the concern was, if we do this at large, are we, you know, anybody could be nominated and elected to it? If there isn't the initial interest, I think the concern is that some of the power that people currently have, and I mean that by the amount of running blood drives, food drives, running the events, that some of that could go away. And that was the experience of some of our school people that went to this. Application-based, we're interested in the participation, that interest piece.
I think we run the election and then, once that's in place, and then you start looking out for volunteers and people to be part of committees to help getting blood drives going and whatever other clubs that need help to it.
Would it be unreasonable to require a year of service prior to being eligible to be an officer? So that you can't, it's not popularity kind of, where somebody steps in their senior year of high school and wants to be the student government president?
I think anybody, my perspective, anybody can do it, just like in the real world. Try to make this as real world as possible. But we just have to be very, very stringent on like what the obligation is and what you're there to do. Would we have some kind of like minimum GPA requirement or something like that? Because if a student's really struggling, do we want them to take on all this extra responsibility?
I think what Dale was talking about, you know, I mean, anybody can run. You know, I think what needs to be considered is what would be the process of removal? Right? Because I think we have athletic code, extracurricular code that kids need to follow, which requires a certain grade point average for athletic and activity participation. So we could use that as kind of the guide for it. But I think if we're running into a situation where the president, who's supposed to be coordinating meetings and doing that, if they're not showing up, and again, this gets to the fear of what some of the advisors had, if they're not showing up, if they're not participating, then, you know, kind of what do we do?
Removal process.
The removal process has to be, has to be what's clear. And I'd have to talk to the principal and to the advisors to see what that process that would be, look like, and then how, what would be the succession plan?
Just a suggestion, is you look at like vote totals, maybe, somebody who's coming second and third place, and start looking at those students.
I guess it depends on what kind of structure we're looking at. Like are people gonna run for specific positions? And are we gonna do it per class? Is every class gonna have a president, a vice president, a treasurer?
I think it's just for the school.
Well, but if you do it for every class, then that gives more opportunities, right? It gets more kids involved. And you can have a class president, right?
Good. But how would that look like in the schools, like a school day? How many elections are you gonna have?
First, some elections, you vote for your degree.
Yeah. Wouldn't be opposed to it.
Freshmen vote for freshmen, sophomores vote for sophomores, right? Those are your elected representatives for your class. And then it gives other, you know, it gives more kids opportunity to participate. That's how it was in my high school.
Wouldn't be opposed.
I can go back and talk to Matt, if that'd be, get some feedback on that?
Sure. Yeah, I think either way, we try to get this started. And if it's not working out for a year or two or three and it's really bad and can't get the right participation, then we can readress it. But this day and age with social media and all these kids communicating, seems like they would like want to go there, do it, do the job they're asked to do and put it on their college resume and all that other stuff.
Agree?
There's gotta be schools that hold elections now that we can get a guideline from.
Eagleville.
Yeah, there are, I just don't know where. Say, yeah, like, I don't know, we have contacts with other school districts or anything that?
We could look into one of them.
They heard that now?
Yep, we could look at what other schools are doing.
Possibly to have some best practices and shorten the learning curve a little bit.
Yep, yep.
Are there gonna be term caps, like can they do it every president, every single year?
I mean, a lot of, historically, schools that did have a hold, I mean, you would run into the same officers year after year.
Right.
You know, that, those are kind of legacy people that have stuck with a class after graduation.
And these elections are usually in the spring before the next fall, right?
Correct.
All right, so we're really looking at juniors and sophomores and freshmen. We're not gonna, or are we gonna expect the eighth graders who are gonna be freshmen to run in eighth grade? I don't know how it's, I mean, whatever those details end up being.
Schools that do have those votes have the freshman class votes fall of freshman year. Just select those officers once they get into high school. Because we have a lot of kids funnel up, local school students, different opener role kids that come to the mix, so we would do it during the fall of ninth grade.
Great, and no electronic voting, all paper ballots and ballot.
No ballots.
No ballots.
All right, so I can go back and work. Depending on the availability of the staff in the one-week turnaround, I might come back to a January then with this policy and it's fine.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to policy fifty-five-thirty-point-zero-one.
Okay, so just to kind of rehash things over the last couple of months. There was a concern that was brought forward about random drug testing of students at the high school. We ran this through our legal counsel and we have a redlined version of the policy. So we had, Stephanie was here, Christine put a presentation together. We talked broadly about what we believe the positive impact is on this, that it does serve as a deterrent, breathalyzers catching kids, preventing kids from coming to events after having been drinking. We're not foolish enough to think that that doesn't go on after the game, but we're not seeing it happen when they come to dances and come to football games. So after working through legal counsel, we have a redlined version of policy, fifty-five-thirty-point-zero-one. He did have some concerns with how the original policy was written and our attorney made the recommendations. They're coming up red pink in the redlined version of the policy. So if this is something that the board would consider, we would move this into action for next week then.
I personally still not comfortable with doing random alcohol tests on students coming in or having students just sort of parking, public parking, going to random drug testing. I think it's just too much government for me, too much intrusion. I mean, if you smell alcohol on a kid, test them. Somebody gets busted with alcohol, drugs in the school, or if you find it in a car in a search with a dog, by all means, search. But just randomly saying that we have access to your vehicle just for parking and public pay for parking, I'm not a fan of that.
I disagree, Dale. I think it's important as far as stopping it.
Thank you.
Don't government should be involved in someone's private life?
Gray area, how much gray area is there, Dale?
I'm just asking.
I think, I mean, if we were, just, I think.
Where does that stop?
I think in talking to Stephanie and just looking at this, I mean, we are a publicly-funded organization and we know that and we're respectful of that. We appreciate all the support that our community gives. But when it comes down to the maintenance of the property, it's our responsibility within our budget to maintain that property. Similarly, the village hall, we'll have rules at the village hall. If you were to go to any public place, there are rules associated with what can happen on that property. Given the fact that we're dealing with minors, we're dealing particularly with high school-age kids. We know that kids dabble in this stuff and we wanna do everything we can to try to keep the environment as safe as possible. And that's this position, it's not to catch, it is to deter to the best that we can, but to do everything we can to keep this stuff off of our property. We've talked, and I had the board on, you know, a number of occasions just around what are we catching kids doing from a student discipline standpoint? We do catch the vapes quite a bit. Christine has presented on the THC vapes that we have. We don't deal with a whole lot of alcohol on our property, not that we don't, but we don't deal with a whole lot of it. But we do believe the fact that that breathalyzer component, particularly at dances and football games, acts as a deterrent to students coming on property after having consumed alcohol. So that is, you know, that's why the recommendation is in front of you. It's just a tool that we are trying to use to keep the stuff off of our property during school day or at school events.
Any other questions? Jake?
I guess how common would you say it is across other districts to have breathalyzers at dances, things like that?
It's becoming increasingly popular. Christine did a presentation and I wanna say it was in the neighborhood of fifteen or sixteen school districts that were readily available. And a number of those were in Waukesha, Kentucky. So if you still have that presentation handy, we can get you a closer answer.
Carolyn?
I think it's important to continue this as that deterrent. I really, I agree, and I think that's really important. I think that's why our numbers of what we're seeing are low because the kids know, if this, then I could lose the privilege of parking and driving to school and then wanting to take the bus. So I think that's really important, plus the safety of these kids, them getting in a vehicle and having access to whatever they left in their vehicle.
No one wants to be dropped off in your mom's minivan, Carolyn.
Yeah, I think it's a safety issue. I don't want the kids using it and then driving.
Parents are busier than they've ever been. And the early identification of a problem that wouldn't otherwise show up on their radar, I just think it's very valuable and.
So I think I asked this in a previous meeting, but it says athletics and activities, competition performance. I, can we include other clubs? I mean, I understand we can't test everybody, but if we're gonna test, which I don't agree with, by the way, but if we're gonna do it, we should cast as wide a net as possible. Why are we not casting the net as wide as possible?
And we can test, we could increase the pool to anybody who participates in any extracurricular activity. That is there. We, I think the original thinking on it was we were gonna get the clubs that participated in competitions. But there is nothing that prevents us from expanding that pool to kids who are involved in a current non-testing activity.
The language was written around competition and, or if it had an executive board or equivalent. But I can check on that, I don't know that that would.
Yeah, I mean, the board has full latitude. If this policy is in place, the board can say, outside of anybody who just comes to school, you can't be tested for just showing up to school. But if you're given access to parking, clubs, sports, other activities, the board can say that everybody goes in that testing pool and those kids are all part of that random drug.
You had asked what other districts I had connected with and I looked, so when I did the presentation, I looked at random drug testing. And so O'Conawak, Pewaki, Arrowhead, Wanakee, and Meskego, Oak Creek, Franklin, Trivet, Kimberley, Menominee Falls, DePere, and Northland Pines were ones that I was able to get my hands on quickly.
So like a percentage, we have an approximation?
We don't, these aren't, these policies aren't readily, we can't just readily access the policies. I mean, Christine was able to look through media, look at what news outlets have reported on what school districts are doing, and that's where that list comes from. I can, you know, speaking, you know, at my time at Waukesha, breathalyzers were becoming popular at football games, they were part of going to dances. When I worked at Cedarburg High, or worked in the Cedarburg School District fifteen years ago, they were doing breathalyzers going into dances. It was the ping pong ball approach. You walked in, if you grabbed the red ball, you were going over and breathalized there. So some districts have this readily accessible if they were part of a news report, but to actually dig through all of the policies, we weren't able to get into that.
Any other questions or comments?
When would this move forward, far a vote, is this?
Next week, Monday. We've entertained it long enough. If there's other homework that the board wishes that we do, we can try to dig into that. But I was planning on talking to Dale about having it on the agenda for Monday for approval.
Will the vote simply be based on parameters that you're talking about right now or would we be talking about the wider net?
If the board, yeah, if the board and they're in the approval next week, you know, motions that we test all ninth through twelfth grade students, then in the random testing, all ninth through twelfth grade students are involved in extracurricular, co-curricular, and parking at the high school, then that would capture, I think, the net that Crosby is referring to, you know, in her question. You know, we can make sure that the policy reflects that and do that.
Who goes with that?
Me too.
Just I guess one.
Jake?
Do we think we'd cast a wider net if instead? Do we think we'd cast a wider net if instead of focusing on activities or parents could just opt onto it? Right, so just when you register for school, if parents want to just opt into it. I know, I understand the concerns, but as a parent, I would put my kids in the program, right, to be eligible for random drug testing, me personally. I'd want that, but maybe you get a wider net that way and you don't have to worry so much about personal liberties and things like that, just an idea.
Does that give me the option of opting out then Jake?
Well, yeah, it'd be an optional program.
But we don't want that if we're gonna do a.
Well, I guess I'm trying to gauge.
Understood.
What would the response rate be, what would that look like?
I think Jake, what we could do is, we could look into the question as a, you know, kind of an or. If, you know, if you participate in athletics activities, have a parking pass, or your parent wishes to opt you into this. You know, I think we could probably look at it in that regard.
Yeah, both.
So, so we could look at, we could look at, to see if we could have that as an option for parents to opt their children in if they wanted to. But if you're participating in any one of those three buckets, the ask of administration is to have them in the random pool.
So they'd automatically be in with all of, everything we have in the policy. However, if you've got a kiddo that doesn't, isn't a participator in any of that, check yes.
That's what we're gonna ask, yeah, we'll look into see, we'll talk to our attorneys and see if that's possible.
Alright, any other questions, comments? Alright, thank you.
Thank you sir.
Moving on to personnel topics.
Alright, so I'm gonna go through tonight, just overarching staff retention efforts. We have a goal around our staff retention, a strategic goal, that goal is that we retain ninety-five percent of our certified staff. And super excited to share that for the first time in four years, we have attained that goal. We retain ninety-five point six percent specifically of our staff. So I think it's important to remember that we talk about retention and we talk about retaining those staff. We obviously are not factoring in retirement, so we don't look at a retirement the same way as we have done resignation. We also don't factor in limited term contracts. So staff who are issued a limited term contract, who don't return the following year, we are anticipating they're not returning the following year. That's what a limited term contract is. So what is involved with our retention efforts? We conduct exit interviews. This past year, we had five people who completed the exit interview via a Google form. So everybody who leaves is offered an exit interview, they can either meet with me in person, or they can fill out a Google form. The number one theme of the exit interviews was, it's not a good fit. We did have another rationale, and that was, there's an inability for HR to match the other offers I'm receiving. And I think it's really important to note here that when staff need to go somewhere else or they have a better offer. We do have staff that will come back and say, Rachel, I have an offer and it's for three thousand dollars more, can't you, can't you meet that? We have worked really hard over the last two years to right-size our compensation. And so if I do this, right, I give that teacher the three thousand dollar bump for the same years of experience that colleague B has. Same job that colleague B has, I've now wrong-sized the system. And so there's a reason that for two years in a row now, compensation is not a theme around state interviews or exit interviews. Like, people aren't complaining about their compensation because we've got it right. And so even though it might seem for some people, like, right, three thousand dollars, that's such a small amount, why can't you match that? If I start to do that, I start to wrong-size the system again. And so just an important note, I think the other piece I'm always transparent with people about is, there are other districts that most certainly can pay higher than I'm paying. You can go to Wauwatosa and you can get a better offer. But I guarantee you're not gonna have the same resources, the same support, the same great experience as if you're working there. And so kind of right grass isn't always greener. We conduct state interviews, so this fall, we conducted interviews with twenty-eight certified staff members. We look at our perception survey data, I'll talk about that, fall to spring. We formed a wellness committee last year, and we continue that wellness committee this year, and then we have a really robust mentoring program. So our state interviews, these were the questions asked, they really have not changed very much year to year. My favorite question is really, which aspects of your work do you value most? And then that last question, is there anything else that you want me to know? I can tell we're continuing to improve as a system when the, is there anything else that you want me to know, ends with a, no, I think that about covers it. Versus my first year where it was paragraph, paragraph, and this, and this, and this, and this. So again, moving in the right direction. So what were the themes of the state interviews? The first theme, top theme was time. Staff reported, just on a very consistent basis, that they want more time. They don't feel like there is enough time with all of the different things that are being added to their plate. We did have some staff talk about, there is enough time, but it's always not, it was used efficiently. And then some of our staff commented that they don't feel that there's enough time, but they've gotten better at setting work-life boundaries. And that has made the work feel more manageable. And so I'll talk about action steps based on these themes after I get through all of them. The second theme is that the most meaningful recognition is personal, specific, and genuine. I had somebody give this analogy, and I thought it was a really good one. He talked about how in his school, he feels like the recognition, the celebrations are kind of like receiving a participation trophy. We have a staff luncheon that, where everybody gets pizza, thank you for your effort. Or we have a cake because we did well on the report card. And it feels like everybody's getting the same recognition. And he talked about, what I value the most is when I'm getting authentic feedback that's specific to me. Thank you for doing X, Y, and Z, going above and beyond by volunteering at this event, or by communicating with this parent proactively, or, right? The really specific feedback. And that was also evident, I would say, specifically in some of our buildings, the high school in particular. When high school teachers spoke about the culture change that exists there, they can specifically talk about this practice. That feedback and recognition is really individualized, it's personal, and it's authentic. And I think that that has really impacted the positive culture there. And then we had several people really just comment on a true appreciation for this state interview process. And I share that because when we started this year, I actually asked our team, I said, do we want to continue with state interviews? You know, we've been doing these now for three years, do we think we're gonna uncover more, you know, information that is gonna drive next steps? And the team said, yes, we're gonna keep going. And so having more than one person say that they feel heard, they feel valued by being a part of this, just really justified, I would say, the need for continuing this practice. The third theme was meaningful professional learning. So I bolded and highlighted the first theme, because I think that this is something that has come up in the past year. It's been a theme, it was a theme last year, it continues to be a theme this year. And just a real testament to Christine and her team in being responsive, I think, to this. So last year, introducing some really targeted work around behavior interventions as a system. You might have recalled that this summer, during our summer orientation for all teachers, they all received a behavior training. And so really, again, we're trying to be responsive to this. I think teachers can't get some of this information fast enough, right? When you have behaviors in your classroom, you want it fixed and you want it fixed now. But really, we are tackling this as a system in buildings and system-wide. And so I think that we're gonna continue to see positive change. I think another theme when it came to professional learning here was, we have a lot of, I would say, like, one-offs, right? Like our occupational therapists, our guidance counselors, our library media specialists. And when we ask everybody in the building to come together for something, we have to make sure it's relevant for all of them. We can't say, we'll just try and apply this to your content area, that becomes a waste of people's time. So if you're gonna ask somebody to sit in a room and listen, you gotta make it relevant. And then we've gotten, I would say, away from attending conferences. Staff do not feel like they have permission to attend state and national conferences. And so just looking, they're looking for a desire to make sure that that's something that they can do to grow in their content area expertise. And then, did you have a question Greg?
On the last one, on the, thank you, attending conferences? Is that something that used to happen quite a bit? Teachers would just go for the weekend, or?
So I can't.
Sounds like a party.
Um, no, I wouldn't consider it to be.
It's okay, I mean, everyone does it, you know.
Yeah, no, I don't.
Even cool kids do it, you know.
I don't think that they're parties, I think that, being someone in a former life who attended these conferences. I think that there is something to be said when you go to a conference that is truly specific to your area of expertise. And you're surrounded with people from your, like, when I go to my HR network, right, meetings, there is a lot to be gained from that. So I think that there is something there. I think one of the things that we have to just consider again is, post-COVID, a lot is offered virtually. So we don't have to leave the state anymore. I think the other piece is, right, cost, and then what are we doing with the learning? So, you know, to send a team somewhere and then come back, the question always has to be, what, how are we spreading this? And so, again, it's not, we're always gonna say no, but I think there needs to be some discussion around it. But no, I don't think it's a party when they go. And then the last theme was really around classroom autonomy and professional trust. So I think this kind of is to be expected based on where we're at with our guaranteed and viable curriculum. We have implemented a lot of new curriculum. And when you do so, you want to do that with fidelity, you want to stick to, this is what they're telling us to do, the first go-around, let's do it as such. So that we can say that we're doing it with fidelity. What I heard from staff was, I'm doing it that way, but I'm watching as my kids might need something else. They might need to slow down, they might need to speed up, I might need to supplement. And staff really want to feel supported, that they can, they can, you know, kind of take a little sideline, a side approach from that curriculum. And not, right, get their hands slapped. And so my line has been like, there's not a curriculum police, that no one's job is curriculum police. Are you using data to drive your instructional decision? Are you sticking with the curricular resources that have been approved when you make those changes? And if you can say yes to those things, right, are you using evidence-based teaching and learning practices? Then use your professional autonomy, that is what you are being paid to do. But I think, again, it was really this idea of, am I gonna be supported in that? And so just getting, getting, getting them more comfortable in that. And then this idea of micromanagement came up. I've heard that word a little bit more frequently than I have in the past. And so what I put underneath that bullet point is, we need to continue to unpack what accountability looks like in a culture of excellence versus being micromanaged. And so I think there's a difference, right? When I have, when I see a principal who says, we're gonna log all of the times that we make positive phone calls home. Because it's a strategic action step that we think is going to change the culture of the school. That's not micromanagement, that's holding people accountable for something that that principal believes is valuable and that is going to change culture of the school. And so we have to start to discern, right, accountability versus micromanagement. And I think that that's new for our system as we continue to develop a culture of accountability. And then the last piece is really making sure we just continue to communicate the why. So if there's new policy, if there's a new expectation, if there's a procedure, we have to do a better job of talking about why it is in place. We can't just throw out, I'm asking you to do this, and it is another thing, without clearly defending and justifying the why. That's really important, it's also really important to make sure that we're transparent about who are the decision makers, who was at the table? Who, who provided feedback? Because, right, some people feel like, how did they come to that decision? They don't even know, and it's really important to be transparent about the process behind, again, making decisions, putting new policies, procedures in place. And then, these were just things that were worth noting, they weren't necessarily themes, but I think just worth noting. So one is just, each school is different, and we have to continue to recognize that we will move forward as a system, always, right? Big goals, big strategic objectives, but not always at the same pace and not always with the same tools. And then families, students, and community continue to be a source of pride. Then the number one most resounding answer, when I asked staff, what do you value the most? Students, colleagues, families. It was hands down the number one, people want to be here because of what Madwanago represents to them. It is a source of just immense pride. So what are our action steps? So what we're gonna keep doing, we're gonna keep recognizing appreciating staff. We're gonna maintain our focus on professional learning communities, guaranteed viable curriculum, we're gonna maintain competitive compensation. And then we're gonna continue to slow down our curriculum cycle, and that's particularly at the elementary level. What we're gonna start doing, we have a priority around normalizing work-life-fit behaviors. So I'm gonna talk about that a little bit with the wellness committee, but that is one of our priorities of our wellness committee, is how do we normalize work-life-fit? So things like, stop checking your email after seven o'clock PM. There's nothing good that comes out of email after seven o'clock PM, you're not gonna solve any problems, you're not gonna have any productive conversations, so shut it down. Something like eating lunch with your peers and not doing work while you're eating lunch. Maybe you don't do that every day, but once in a while, like, that's okay, you shouldn't feel guilty about that, okay? Ensuring staff to have an understanding of the priorities, mission, vision, and goals for the organization. Clearly communicating at all levels of the organization when change is made. And then we're gonna be doing an analysis of prep time and the professional development time for staff. So I'm a firm believer that I could give staff twenty full workdays untouched, and I would still probably have some staff that tell me that there's not enough time. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be looking at, is more prep time needed? Is, is the way we structure our professional development days, do we need to evaluate that? And so we are going to do that to just ensure that, again, teachers are set up for success. Our wellness committee, so I spearhead that committee, we've got teacher representation, assistants, fair professionals, just really good representation. We're using data to drive a culture of wellness, and so what we've been focused on the last three months is evaluating the components that promote staff retention. So we've identified five buckets, leadership and communication, professional learning and growth, workload and time management, recognition and belonging, and wellness and support systems. And what we have done is, we are developing one singular action step around each of those five components that we're gonna implement to strengthen each of those areas to promote staff retention. So our teams, we have kind of little work groups within the wellness committee that are developing, we're calling them seeds of growth. One seed that we can plant and kind of nurture to promote that staff retention. It's a really great team, and they are absolutely like gung-ho. We did our gratitude challenge, showing gratitude, we had over one thousand participants, one thousand gratitude shout-outs. We only have seven hundred and fifty staff, so just an incredible participation rate in what we're, again, trying to do to promote a culture of wellness across the system. And then my last slide, we have another strategic objective that we think measures the wellness of our organization that promotes retention. And that's, I would recommend M A S D is a great place to work, excited to say we had our highest data point. So you can see, we were on a really good upward trajectory, we took a dip in spring of two thousand twenty-five. I think that that spring was a tough spring, if you recall, it was the first spring that we were facing a budget deficit, it was the first spring that we were looking at non-annuals. And we took a dip, and this fall, we are back up. And this fall, we are back up to the highest we've been, 79%. And then I think it's important to note, when it, when we talk about, right, respondents, 381 people took the survey in the spring, 380 took the survey in the fall. So a really comparable sample size for the data.
Rachel?
Yes?
380 staff out of 725? Is that good, bad, or different?
So what we aim for, what we tell our principals is your goal, because principals administer this to their buildings on an individual building level. What we tell our principals is, our goal is, we want, we want 90% of their building to participate. What I will say is that most of the participants are certified staff. So we track, are you a certified staff or a support staff? Because, again, all staff take it. The response level of our certified staff is far, far higher than our support staff. And our support staff don't have access to computers at school as easily as our certified staff. And then additionally, the week that we administer this, we do it on a day where, we do it on a week where staff have professional development and some work time built into their schedule. So I think that's why we also get a push of more certified staff than support staff. So is it, is it as representative as we want it to be? No, but it does give us some good information.
Is there...
Oh.
I thought you were raising your hand, sorry. Is there a way to, for the support staff that don't have readily available access to maybe have a, I don't know if it's possible with IT, you have a computer set up in the room next to the office where any of them can go in and just...
Yeah, they all have, they all have access to computers and technology, so they all have...
Log in and all that?
Yes, they all have that. It's just, again, for a teacher, most of our teachers are looking at their computers at some point in time every day. I can't say that that's the case for every one of our, right? Like, our custodians are, they're not always in that space, and so, but they all have access, yes.
Can we go back to slide five real quick? The theme number-one time? Yeah, can you explain to me or give me an example of, on the third bullet, there needs to be more dedicated time for teachers to work without having to be accountable to an agenda or a to-do list?
Yep. So an example would be that during a professional learning session, so Wednesdays after school, in many of our sites, they have professional learning for the whole staff, where they all come together and they engage in, again, professional learning. Something that I heard is, we're engaged in that learning, and then we leave with, and now when you go back, do X, Y, and Z. So you're going to, you know, either write a lesson plan that implements the things we just learned. Or with your teams, we want you to go back and develop an assessment that incorporates what we just learned. So it's, we're, we're always giving something more. It's not just an unstructured, can we just have the time to? I call it, like, play, play around with the art of teaching. Another example might be, and I'm not going to say whether I think this is right or wrong, but there are teams that view, when they meet with their content teams, view having to record those conversations in a PLC log as an agenda, it's a to-do, it's not for us. You know, why do we have to record that? And, again, I, I think there's a lot of merit in keeping those types of logs, but some people view those as, it's a to-do list.
All right, well, for, I mean, for what it's worth, I think, if you're a public servant, which they are, accountability counts. And, you know, I, I don't want to micromanage anyone either, but I worked for the government for 31 years, everything I did was accountable. That's all there is to it. Thank you.
There's a time and a place, too, where when we're talking about professional learning communities or whatever it is, it becomes part of the habit, and then you don't necessarily have to have a log kept. We're just not at that point yet. You know, we've done a lot in a three-year, three-and-a-half-year period of time. That is still early, and some of that work is still in its infancy. So we do need to make sure that we're staying on course with that. We, I mean, human nature, if, sometimes if it's not written down, we forget to do it. And I think that there's components to the meetings, there's stuff that we ask people to look at. If it's not recorded, we, we right now believe it's not getting done, and it's not intentional. It's just, it'll slip through the cracks. So we want to make sure that we keep an eye on that, knowing that at some point we can fade that expectation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
We're down to student learning topics, new course proposal.
Okay, so I have one additional course proposal for the 26, 27 school year for MHS. I talked about this briefly at the November Committee of the Whole Meeting. We are proposing that we add online physical education three. So we currently have levels one and two for online physical education. As part of the graduation requirement, students are required to take three half-credits, so three courses of physical education. And for a variety of reasons, we are seeing a need from students to take all three of those half-credits online. So we would like to build out that third course, so students can do that. The course proposal was linked for you, that has all the details about the specific content of the course. But just briefly, it's an advanced semester-long course. The course is designed to develop lifelong habits of health, wellness, and overall well-being. And the course builds on previous physical education courses. There would not be any additional staff that would be needed to run this course. We would use the staff that we have. It's kind of a similar situation to what we talked about, about the advanced placement pre-calculus class. Students have to take this course, so they would just be taking, instead of another physical education course, they might be taking this online course. So we'll just schedule our staff accordingly. There would be no cost for this course, other than some curriculum writing costs, which we have a budget for, for summer work. So I will be bringing this back to you next week for approval, unless there are any questions or discussions.
I just have a comment, real quick. Physical education online, isn't that axioboring a little bit, maybe? Just saying.
Yeah.
And now we have to have three of them, because they're for two...
Yep, so...
Am I way off base? Am I, am I...
I was thinking the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
So some, some students are, the reason why some students want to take it is that so they can create space in their schedule, so that they can take some higher-level courses, some more advanced placement courses, and some other courses that may be of interest to them for what they are looking to do for their future. Other kids that just prefer that format. If you look at the course proposal, there are physical requirements within the course. The kids do have to wear an activity tracker, they have a requirement for, for physical movement and a log that they fill out. But that's kind of the reasoning behind the course.
Thank you. Rossby?
Is this course currently being taught in person? Like, is this an actual course that they take, right?
Well, there are, the course itself does not exist in this format in person, but there are a variety of different physical education courses that the students can choose from.
So this requires the student to purchase a tracking device? But then they're just manually recording their steps? So it's an honor system?
I think there are screenshots that are required that...
Tape to the dog's leg when he's running around the yard.
You're a TV ad, like... I'd be happy if the kid was running around the yard, out of the room and off the, little game, you know?
Just one last...
Go ahead.
Carolyn?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Is this able to be taken as a course load, like a course overload then, during the school year or, or during the summer?
Yep, they can take it in the summer, or they can take it during the school year. And yet they can be taking additional credits.
So they have their full course load as normal, less than overload, uh-huh.
Okay, I, I, I don't really have a problem with it. I guess we just got to monitor it, because if all of a sudden there's, like, 400 kids that want to do this online, then we're going to be letting go of PE teachers.
Our numbers have been pretty steady for the, the number of students that are requesting to take online PE. It's just that some are requesting to take that third level and they don't have it.
So, I mean, as long as we have the option, it, it's getting out of control, we got to scale it back or something.
I, I can say that our PE classes are taken at a very high rate. The face-to-face ones, our strength training classes, both the semester-long and the advanced one, those are full, full to capacity. I mean, kids are, every station in the weight room is being used. So, you know, when Angela says we've seen kind of steady numbers, we're not seeing kids trend towards this component. We are seeing a lot of active engagement in the, in the physical education courses.
Every time I walk in the gym, it's back to the weight room. Carolyn, you have another question?
Sorry.
It's back in the day when I was in school. We did have, we had, like, the summer class, the summer PE class, which was kind of like, where some, there, there could be a few of the slackers that would fall into that. Is this, is there, like, a...
Didn't that clash, Carolyn?
No, I was, I was in, like, all the advanced PE, as fit as a fiddle. So would that be something where, is that like a, not like a GPA requirement, but, you know?
I think one of the things that we, that we look at, and then one of the things that we consider is that we have a very high number of credits for graduation.
Yeah.
We have a 27-credit graduation program, which is not, that exceeds many, many school this year's graduation requirements. And as kids check the boxes of electives that are required electives along the way, what we're finding is, kids also want to pursue the advanced placement course, so they want to pursue the work release to get hands-on learning, the, those classes. And this, this extra gym credit, this extra PE credit, along with the health credit, the personal finance credit, we do offer a number of online summer opportunities, or in this case, like overload opportunity. Those, those other credits are building towards that 27. We want to try to make it in some paths as easy as possible. So we also have personal finance that you can take, you have health that you can take online. We have the two PE classes that you can take online. By adding that third class, what we're doing is creating space for kids who are either going to go to work, you know, co-op setting, or kids who are going to be going to take those advanced placement. What's that, the college credit? Some of the university credits where the white...
The transcription credit.
Yeah. We need to create some space and some opportunity for that. Whitewater's calculus class doesn't necessarily fit neatly within MHS's high school schedule, and this does provide some flexibility for those students.
And the other thing I think I would say about that is just for the required electives, one of the things that we pride ourselves on at the triage... For students at this level is to provide choices for them within the requirement. So we have a number of different music courses that they can take. We have a number of different art courses that they can take. We have our CTE courses. Same thing with physical education, we want to offer it in a variety of different formats and areas that they can choose which one best meets their needs.
Okay, Rossby?
Is, is there a state requirement for how many PE credits you need to graduate? So it is...
Yep.
Okay. Personal finance requirement?
Yes.
Okay, good. I, I mean, I guess I'm not proud of that, but, like, just looking at the units, like, to me, this looks like a big blow-off class. I mean...
Gym halls as well as...
I'm not, I'm not advocating...
I love gym class, gym class is awesome.
I'm not advocating...
Because let's bring that back, that was so fun.
I'm not advocating that we go down the road of blow-off classes, but I do think that as we offer a more rigorous course path at the high school, and we've seen some AP courses that are coming forward, as we encourage kids to pursue those, we do want to create some space in the schedule where kids have an academic experience, but they don't have that same load as, as four AP courses, five AP courses, or advanced honors, whatever it may be. This can provide some space for that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Great. And the next item is just an update on our new Curriculum Council. So the Curriculum Council is up and running. We had our first meeting, that was held on November 3rd, and have a strong membership for our council. We have five professional staff members, which span elementary, middle, and the high school. We have two building administrators, one from the middle school and one from the elementary. We have two district administrators on the council, which is myself and Michelle Ziegler, one board member, which is Mike Gooch, and then we have eight parent reps. Again, those parent reps span all of our levels and hit almost all of our elementary schools. So really good representation there. At our first meeting, we reviewed the purpose and role of the Curriculum Council. We went over the goals and initiatives that we currently have around curriculum in the district. We dug in a little bit to our curriculum review process, so that the council understands how that works within the district. We also dug into our third-through-fifth grade ELA pilot that we currently have occurring, because the council will be helping to provide some feedback regarding those resources that we are looking at. And then the council had an opportunity to give some feedback on future meeting topics that we would discuss. So our second meeting is scheduled for February 2nd. At that meeting, we will be discussing, again, our third-through-fifth grade pilot. We will be toward the ends of, end of the pilot, so we will have some feedback to share with them. And then we will dig into the materials a little bit. We will have an update on the curriculum work that is happening around physical education and health. And then we will have an update for the council on our middle school transition work that is occurring. So things are going really well. We had a great first meeting, really good feedback from all of the members of the council. Any questions on that?
What, you have anything to add to that?
Angela's review of the meeting was accurate. It, it was a good meeting. It was, yeah, I would look forward to the next couple, see what goes on with them.
Thank you. Student services, we don't have any this week, finance and facilities. Craig asked me to ask you to have a one-hour limit. I'll see what I can do. No promises, though. All right, so first thing is, I have a budget development calendar here. I posted this for, for you guys, just to lay out what we're going to do month by month as we go out and build the 26, 27 budget. I put in there some other important things, like MHS course info...
Is this a new, is this a new thing for you?
Brand-new, Craig, I did it just for...
The colors are nice, though, very nice.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just so you can see, we have a strategy in place to build enough time in here as we go through the, the year to build the budget the way we, we need to. You'll see that I don't have everything, you know, for example, in May, we have the Committee of the Whole Meeting, where we'll talk about the tax levy and the budget projection, what that looks like, employee compensation around that time, the board meeting, it's TBD. We, we have some space here in, in the summer months. If you guys have concerns, let me know. Otherwise, we'll adopt this next month, and this will be our strategy we'll go for. Okay? All right. Next thing that we have then is a, a membership projection. So this is really what we'll do right now, is the first thing we'll do in building the budget. I'll quickly go through this here, I'm going to make a recommendation for what our membership counts are going to look like as we build next year's budget. Again, third Friday counts, go into our membership, that defines 85% of our funding. This, just to put it, you know, remind you guys the difference of headcount and membership. Headcount is, you know, the number of kids sitting in seats on the third Friday. The orange bars there is the membership. That's the number of kids that live with inside of our district boundaries and attend, uh, Wisconsin public schools, okay? So you can see the difference between the blue and the orange there, you know, that really is the open and roll in and out, uh, being accounted for. Since we have more open and roll in, we have more, you know, larger headcounted membership. But ultimately, what we're going to talk about here is the orange bar. We're trying to predict what that's going to look like next year, okay? I'm going to just fast-forward here for you guys real quick. We do this grade by grade. What you're going to hear me say in the very last slide is, I'm going to recommend that we have an, an assumption of a minus 85 FTE. And I'll talk about the why behind all of that. The first thing that we have to do is predict 4K. This is the hardest grade level to predict, because we're trying to guess how... This is the hardest grade level to predict, because we're trying to guess how many kids have been born here four to five years ago and are gonna start coming to schools next year. 4K is not compulsory, but you can see that we have, uh, Waukesha County birth rates over the years. You can see that we have a declining birth rate and it's going down. Typically, as we look past, in years past, when we started offering 4K, uh, we ask ourselves how many kids of all the county births? So as we kinda go back here, there's about thirty-six hundred births here in the last, in twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. How many of those kids are gonna show up at MAS D schools as 4K students? The history says, you know, between five and six percent. What I did here is I looked at the last two years of five percent, five point three, uh, and there's a little bit of rounding here. But if I take an average of the last two, what I'm saying is that five point one percent of all county births four to five years ago are going to show up as 4K students. That seems to be our historical stride. So my assumption here is that five point one percent of all county births in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two will equal our 4K membership count. Predicting 5K is also kind of the same deal, but I changed, uh, a, a different approach here. And I, and what I'm doing here is saying that because you don't have to go to 4K, but 5K you do, how many kids or how does that 4K cohort show up one year later as 5K students? And you can, with the exception of COVID, which was just a weird one, let's take a mulligan there and look at the other years. We're at about thirty percent. The average of these, you know, seven or eight years is twenty-nine point three percent. Let's just round it, call it thirty percent. In other words, our 4K membership this year will grow by thirty percent going into next year. All right, and that will make our 5K numbers. As for the rest of first through twelfth grade, what we do is we take a look at each cohort and say, how do they advance from year to year? So I just kinda highlight these students in orange. Uh, in the O A, uh, school year, they were at three hundred sixty-one. By the time they became seniors, they grew to three ninety-nine. The green cohort going from year to year started at three oh five and grew to three seventy-eight. And these are some of our historical fa- uh, figures here. So every cohort you study, and then what we do is we say, well, what, what percentage rate of growth from year to year are they experiencing as they move from grade to grade? And once we do that, then we can kinda say, okay, over the last ten or so years, what's the average growth rate percentage-wise from ninth to tenth grade? Or for, between any two grade levels? Okay? When we do this, we can take a number of statistical looks and say, okay, what's the average of the last five years for each grade level? The last two years, the last, you know, one year? We can do a weighted approach where we put sixty percent weight on the most recent year and forty percent weight on the pr- average of the prior four years, and there's a number of different ways we can do this. Again, I'm knocking the COVID year out because that was a weird one, but we can kinda take a look here. From grade to grade, over the last ten or so years, the cells in red are showing you that we actually have a decrease. The cohorts shrunk as they moved from first to second, or second to third. Prior to COVID, you could see that almost every single grade level consistently up through the ninth grade, uh, group. You know, the only red cells we're seeing here before COVID are from ninth to tenth and tenth to eleventh. There's just certain trends about our student body that like hold true. And what you'll see here is that when students go from sixth to seventh grade, once that Parkview Middle School option becomes available, you're seeing a lot of kids join the MAS D at that time. The same thing with, uh, ninth grade, you're seeing universally really big numbers here of the cohort grows as MHS becomes an option and kids leave the parochial schools and they join the Wango High School. You can, you can see some historical trends that are telling. Um, we, you know, post-COVID, you know, we, we've seen some decline. We've, we grow, but we grow at a much smaller rate here post-COVID for a variety of reasons that we've talked about. We have some declining enrollment, I think we would have more people moving in. Um, you know, mortgage rates were, if Carolyn could help them out a little bit more. Okay? But what I ultimately did is I looked at every single grade level, I said, what's the average of the last two years? And say, let's just say that's what's gonna happen next year. So in this column here, we have kindergarten to first grade, our kindergartners are gonna grow at a three percent rate. Our first, uh, the second graders are gonna grow at a one percent rate between now and when they come back. And so I have one for each grade level. All right, and this is just something called the cohort survival method. Altogether, this is kinda what we're saying right here, okay? So at the 4K level, we're gonna use our county births, say five point one percent of those students are gonna become ours. So we're gonna predict a hundred and eighteen members, okay? Uh, our 5K students, as we take a look at, there's two hundred fifty-seven now, but we're gonna take a look at these ninety-three ki- these ninety-three members. Uh, and they're gonna grow by thirty percent, okay? So just remember, 4K, this is, uh, for funding purposes, we only get sixty percent of those 4K kids. So this ninety-three number is actually reflecting sixty percent of the head counts there. But those kids, as they come back and get fully funded and grow by thirty percent, will have two hundred and two kindergarten students. And then each of these cohorts here, so as the 5K students go to first grade, they'll grow by three point one percent. So these two hundred fifty-seven kids will become two hundred sixty-five. So on, so forth, all the way down the line. Last year, we had forty-three hundred and nineteen kids. That'll become two, four thousand, uh, two hundred and thirty-four, so that's a loss of eighty-five. Again, if we just kinda boil it down here, what kinda happens each year is that these three hundred eighty-one seniors are gonna be replaced, uh, really, uh, if we just remove 4K for a second, by two hundred and two, uh, kindergartners. So you have like basically a full-time cohort coming in at the 5K level, a full-time cohort leaving at the senior level. And there's just that natural shrinking of, you know, that's the declining birth rate right there, that's less babies being made. So, um, that's the ultimate, the recommendation I'll make is that we build a budget here. And we can adjust this as time goes on, if we learn more things. What I'll say though, right now, is that as I went back to this, we have certain cohorts that are just different for whatever reason. Uh, this cohort here, that's gonna be going into seventh grade next year, they're exceptionally large. They started as three hundred and forty-four kindergarten students here. This coming kind of 5K cohort will be at two oh two. So like, there's a, it's typically around two fifty, but we just have one of these bubbles that's small in size here, okay? But this is my best guess, so the recommendation is that we build a budget with a minus eighty-five FTE.
Carolyn? When is our 4K night where we have the information on that? That's coming up, isn't it?
Oh, let's go look at the budget development calendar and see if we have it on there. Good question here. We're gonna do that on January twenty-second.
And what, when is enrollment at, end of February, Saturday?
That, uh, 4K registration begins on the first Monday of February, so that would be the second.
Are we hoping and projecting that our new offering of full-time 4K is going to increase our 4K name?
Yes. I think what, what it can do is that it's going to be a really attractive option to anybody who lives in our boundaries. So while, you know, just ge- for geog- uh, geography purposes, some folks open enroll north or south or whatever, based on how they travel to work. But when there's a full-day 4K option, you'll probably take it. You'll consider taking it, I should say that. Okay, so it's, it's a very good option, yes.
You baked that into your.
Um, as I, as I looked at what I have here, so if we have up to nine full, four, full-day sections at twenty kids per, let me just go back here, let me start this again. Um, so there's a hundred and eighteen, but that's, and that's the sixty percent of the head count. If you have two hundred kids, um, and, but you're getting sixty percent funding, that would equal a hundred and twenty members. So yeah, I kinda have, have it maxed out, that, that's what we'll have there, so. Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, last thing that I have then is just a quick health insurance update, so, um, I'm gonna give you guys, there's good news and bad news here. And I'm gonna give you both, uh, both parts of it here, okay? So on the screen that we have here is our health insurance, and I'm just gonna walk up here and kinda highlight a few things here. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we were fully insured, we were, we worked with Anthem at that time, that's this blue bar that we have here. They were asking for a thirty-five percent rate increase as we entered in twenty-three, twenty-four. This bar here shows a twenty-five percent increase, so I guess I just said, well, they asked for thirty-five, let's assume we talk down to twenty-five. Let's just say this is our benchmark as to where we thought we were gonna go. Well, we went self-insured here, you can see that, we spent just under eight million dollars there. So we went from spending eight point four, being asked to pay ten point three, but we redefined everything that we did. And I think we got better at delivering healthcare and we got more, um, I mean, we saved money, we avoided cost mark- markups, I should say. So that's a win-win. As we take a look back at this past year, again, these kinda blue striped bars are our, kind of are hypothetical. As if we stay with Anthem at ten percent increase each year, what would that look like?
Could've been twenty.
Could, yeah, could've been whatever. So, um, I guess it's just a reasonable thing to say, hey, let's benchmark it, how are we doing here? As we look at twenty-three, twenty-four into twenty-four, twenty-five, you can see that our costs rose by just about a million dollars. Um, when we took a snapshot on June thirtieth, ultimately, like, we know what we know on June thirtieth, but there's certain medical services and procedures that are incurred on June twentieth or May fifteenth. But we don't get invoice for those until August or September. So on June thirtieth is when the plan year ends, but what we have to do is we, we have to measure something called, uh, medical claims that are incurred but not reported. So we make a guess as to how much more claims do we think were incurred, just have not yet been reported as of June thirtieth? And our best guess was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I conservatively set more money aside than that. We, we recognized one point seven million dollars and set it aside. In reality, it was three million. We had a ton of claims that showed up after June thirtieth. Um, and really what it was is we have a, a, a number of high-cost claimants that you simply can't plan for or avoid. When a premature baby is born, the best plan design in the world isn't going to change anything about that situation. Same things with, uh, people who have, uh, need neurology needs and there's a surgery that's gonna go inside to the brain. We had a lot of situations like that, and our high-cost claimants, any, defined as anybody over fifty thousand dollars, grew by two million dollars from twenty-three, twenty-four into twen- twenty-four, twenty-five. We, so in this cost here, in this eight point eight million dollars there, there's our health clinic costs, there's our medical claims, there's our pharmacy claims, there's our stop-loss insurance, there's our third-party administrator. We buy stop-loss insurance that ultimately set at seven point, uh, at six point nine million dollars. If our total claims go over six point nine million dollars, we're off the hook. And we did go past that. So the bad news is, is I think we had one of our worst years that we could've had. But we set the plan up in such a way to protect ourselves that if it happened, we're gonna be saved by our stop-loss carrier. So it came through. So again, two things can be true at once. Once we had a, uh, one, we had a bad year, two, the plan worked as, as designed. Uh, but it's something to just keep our eye on. What, what we have here in twenty-five, twenty-six is through four months of data, and then projecting that out over the course of twelve months, if those same four months repeat themselves, we think that will rebound and be back in that eight million dollar range. Um, but time will tell, time will tell, we need a little bit of luck, you know, with all the stuff that we're doing here, so, um, I just wanted to give you guys an update. Once we get about six months past June thirtieth, and this data here is fully mature, we say, we now know, we have enough time. Yep, we, we can now say here's where we're at, okay? Jake?
Two, two questions. The first is, if we hit the stop-loss and that was triggered, did that get re-hearted for us?
So not at this time, but when we go out to market this time, it might get different. So what I would say is I will, I am expecting a, a rate inc. What I would say is no matter what, all medical procedures are increasing at, at, at their own rate of inflation of about nine or ten percent. Across the board, standard, everything. But the stop, that's your medical claims, which is the biggest component that adds up inside of this. But then you also have your stop-loss insurance, I would imagine, that will likely go up there.
Roughly, how much is that, stop-loss?
Um, I, let me, I have it in the memo there, let me just go back and check it out.
How much that could move the needle, right?
Yeah, 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 uh, good question there. So the stop-loss, so there's two types of stop-loss insurance. At the individual level, one individual, uh, we pay the first two hundred thousand. And if there's just unfortunate things in that person's life, once they hit two hundred thousand, all costs beyond that are picked up by the stop-loss carrier. Individual stop-loss insurance, we paid six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for that. We had a number of individuals who pierced that two hundred thousand dollar mark, so we paid six hundred ninety-two thousand, but got some of that money back. Um, in the aggregate, we had a six point nine million dollar limit. We paid forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars for that. So we paid, let's call it fifty thousand dollars, and I got about four or five hundred thousand dollars back. So that, you could say that that worked, but it's gonna catch up to us, you know, when they say, hey, you guys, we, we priced it wrong.
Right.
But we'll go out to market and see what else is out there and.
So we'll be curious to see what happens there, obviously, and then how much does enrollment influence this? So when we, when we made a change to the insurance to that, when we made a change to the insurance offering, so that influenced enrollment counts that people?
By about twenty, it wasn't material. If we were at four hundred employees enrolled, we're at three hundred and eighty now.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so, sorry, a little bad news there, but I need to let you know when those things happen, so there it is. Yes, we had an employee call me that they used our clinic for the first time, was raving about it, so.
Right.
We'll end it on a good note.
That means you're healthy if you use it the first time in two years.
Right. Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Tom? Tom, is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Any other questions for Tom? All right. Well under sixty minutes. Craig is happy. All right, thank you, Tom.
Yes.
Moving on to action items, hires, retirements, and resignations.
So we have one contract modification. So we are requesting a modification for Emma Holtor. She is a psychologist at Big Bend Elementary. She is currently full-time and we are requesting that, um, she be moved to a point four limited-term contract.
Make the motion that we accept or approve the modified contract as discussed.
Set them.
We have a motion and second to approve the contract. Any questions or comments?
Do we have enough coverage then if we're reducing this counter?
Any other questions or comment? All right, here none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Up next, we have executive session, and there was a question we thought about before we came in. Doctor questions?